Good evening, county council.
Good evening.
I'd like to call sign South County Council's Reg. 22233 order. Number one, please give us an invitation. You have a stand. And the man has a clear name.
Let us pray until time have with Father. Do acknowledge you as the one in whom we live, we move, and have our being. We thank you for allowing us to come together for another meeting of this South County Council. We invite your presence and ask that you abide with us as we approach the agenda items that has been prepared for us. We thank you for all your many blessings, and we realize that it is in you that we live and move and have our being, and that there's nothing too hard for you, that you are the ultimate provider. Help us to learn to know how to be abased and when to abound, and whatever state we're in to be content. Rest your blessings upon the county administrator and his staff, and all of our community members who are here to witness local government. Help us to live up to the expectations, to your expectations, and to theirs as well. These are our blessings we thank and ask of your name. Amen.
Amen. Our prayers are just to declare of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, I'd like to motion to approve the agenda with this one change, that we move item number one for new business, which is the presentation of Shaw Air Force Base to write after the approval of the minutes. Move for second. Remove property second that we approve the agenda with that one change. All of you say aye?
Aye.
Can you turn up the microphones? Are you talking to them or something?
Can you hear me now? Yeah, thank you. I have a motion to approve the minutes for July ninth. Move for move. Second. Remove property second that we approve our minutes for our meeting of July ninth and further discussion. Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Nichols, if she all have her space, please come forward.
Good evening, county council. I'm Ashley Nichols, based community planner for Shaw Air Force Base. Today, I would also like to introduce several guests I have with me. This evening, we have Lieutenant Colonel Johanny, our civil engineering commander, who is new here to Shaw, as well as Colonel Bryant, our new mission support group commander, as well as we have additional Shaw personnel, Mr. Sublet, our engineering flight chief, and also several members from our Air Force Civil Engineering Center and consulting partners that are here in the crowd supporting us today. We'd just like to get a brief thank you and overview of our purpose here today. This afternoon, we set up for a brief open house to detail our air installation compatible use zones program. What this program strives is to assess land uses to ensure future land use compatibility as well as existing compatibility, not only with our developments on base, but also with the developments throughout South County. We continuously strive to be a good neighbor and a good partner, and we also work very closely here with the local community, both city planning staff, city council, and also county council. So again, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity for this community engagement as well as partnership. We do have some brochures which details this program. It basically identifies our noise program, how we go about development, things that we consider, as well as it details some of our noise operations. This particular program is updated every ten years. We're kind of on twelve years right now, so we're in that ten-year timeframe, but an open house is a major component of that. So we, again, want to thank South County for giving us a location and a platform to do that here today before county council. We do have several brochures that not only detail the map, but also a synopsis in our citizens brochure that we can provide today for those who have not received the copy. If there are any detailed questions or if anyone has any noise complaints, noise abatement questions, general development questions, they're welcome to reach out to our 20 fighter winning public affairs, and they will put you in touch with the respective department.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. And thank you all for the Colonel and the major. Thank you for serving, and I thank you for doing the presentation and taking the time out of your day to set up downstairs. Thank you. This is Chairman, before they go. I'd just like to say something, please. I want to commend you for what you're doing. I'm retired chief master sergeant. I spent twenty-seven years in the Air Force, twelve of those years on Shaw Air Force Base. My first assignment was in civil engineering squad, so I want you to know that, and I just appreciate what you're doing and how you're working with the community here, which is very important. Now, I'm going to say something, might embarrass someone, but I'm going to say it. A young lady sitting back there, Dr. Alessandra Bates, is my daughter, and she was born at the hospital on Shaw Air Force Base. So when I always say that she was born in South County, she always say, "Huh, Dad, I was born on the federal installation." So I just want to say that thank you, and God bless you for what you do for us. Thank you.
Next item, one there, agenda. RC twenty-four oh nine, approve.
Do I need to use my inside or outside voice? Outside voice, okay. RC twenty-four oh nine is at twelve ninety P Tortured Road. This is a county request by Chad Melton and Tom Farmer, the authorized agents of the property. It's a request to rezone approximately a point nine acre proportion of a large tract of property from agricultural conservation to general commercial. The property is at twelve ninety P Tortured Road. This is the property in question, but more particularly, we're looking at the back portion of the property that's on AC. The applicant is requesting to rezone this back portion to general commercial to bring the entire property into a single zoning district for future development purposes. As it stands today, it's currently a vacant field with a large wooded area between it and the residential subdivision to the east. When we look at rezoning request, we look at the comprehensive land use plan. In this particular instance, it is in a military protection planning area, and the military protection planning area is intended to protect Shaw Air Force Base and Point Set electronic combat range from encroachment and incompatible land uses, and to reduce accident and noise potential to our citizens. In this particular instance, requesting to rezone the property to commercial from a residential agricultural designation is compatible with the plan. The planning commission did recommend approval of this request. A large portion of property is already in the general commercial district, and it does align with best practices. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions on the room? Prior to taking action on second reading, council will have a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against RC twenty-four oh nine, please proceed to the voting. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All vote. Next item, RC twenty-four ten, approve.
RC twenty-four ten is requested five eighty-five North Kings Highway, being brought forward by Ms. Tracy Vance, the property owner. It is to rezone a one acre parcel of land from residential fifteen to agricultural conservation. This is the property in question. It's on the east side of Kings Highway. It is currently a residential lot, historically has been used for a manufactured home, but the grandfathering on that manufactured home has been expired, which is why this request is coming forward. The only zoning districts that allow manufactured homes in the county are general residential and agricultural conservation. In this particular instance, the property itself is zone R fifteen with AC just across the street. When we look at rezoning request, we look at what the comprehensive land use plan says. In this particular instance, it is in the rural development planning area, so rezoning it to a zoning district, in this instance, AC, that reduces residential density, gets more in line with agricultural and rural uses, is compatible with the comprehensive plan. Planning commission did recommend approval of this request. The twenty forty plan supports it, and the property as it exists doesn't fit in the old base standards. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Prior to taking action on second reading, council will have a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against RC twenty-four oh nine, please proceed to the voting. Seeing none, public hearing, please say aye. All vote. Next item, RC twenty-four ten, approve.
RC twenty-four ten is requested five eighty-five North Kings Highway, being brought forward by Ms. Tracy Vance, the property owner. It is to rezone a one acre parcel of land from residential fifteen to agricultural conservation. This is the property in question. It's on the east side of Kings Highway. It is currently a residential lot, historically has been used for a manufactured home, but the grandfathering on that manufactured home has been expired, which is why this request is coming forward. The only zoning districts that allow manufactured homes in the county are general residential and agricultural conservation. In this particular instance, the property itself is zone R fifteen with AC just across the street. When we look at rezoning request, we look at what the comprehensive land use plan says. In this particular instance, it is in the rural development planning area, so rezoning it to a zoning district, in this instance, AC, that reduces residential density, gets more in line with agricultural and rural uses, is compatible with the comprehensive plan. Planning commission did recommend approval of this request. The twenty forty plan supports it, and the property as it exists doesn't fit in the old base standards. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Prior to taking action on second reading, we will have a public hearing. RC twenty-four ten, anyone wishing to speak for or against? RC twenty-four ten, please proceed to the voting. Hearing none? Second. Remove property second that we have second reading on RC twenty-four ten, and further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All vote. RC twenty-four ten is passed. RC twenty-four twelve.
RC twenty-four twelve is at thirty-two hundred Bird Street. The applicant's Mr. Aaron Young, as the authorized agent. They're under a purchase agreement with the current owner of record. Mr. Young did have to leave before the meeting. He had a family emergency. This is a request to rezone approximately thirty-two acres from residential nine to agricultural conservation. Thirty-two hundred Bird Street is a large tract of land that is located entirely on a private road, which means that for development purposes, under the county regulations, it can't actually be subdivided for residential development, so R nine entitlement really doesn't make a whole lot of sense. In order to do an R nine development there, you would actually have to bring a paved roadway through, and then you would have to meet all of the subdivision standards. Additionally, there is not sewer and water out in this particular part of the county to support R nine densities. It is a combination of wooded area and farmed fields. Mr. Young would like to actually put a manufactured home on the property for him as a singular dwelling, and as we said in the previous request, the only two zoning districts in the county that allow that are AC and general residential. The property itself, as you see, is zone R nine, as is everything around it, but we do have similar issues with property across the street. Also, it can't be developed in R nine densities without a public road being brought through and then having public infrastructure available. There is a small area of special flood hazard area on the separate half of the property that will not impact the ability to develop for a singular dwelling, and this property is impacted by our noise attenuation zone for Shaw Air Force Base. It is also about a small piece at the northern end that's impacted by one of our APZs, so it's not suitable for residential development, and it is in our military protection planning area, which is in support of any zoning designation that significantly reduces or eliminates the ability for residential density. In this case, AC from R nine would be a reduction in density. Planning commission does recommend approval of this request. It is compatible with the comprehensive plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
We also going to have a public hearing. Prior to taking action on second reading, anyone wishing to speak for or against RC twenty-four twelve, please proceed to the voting. Hearing none, please, council. Move for move. Second. Remove property second that we approve RC twenty-four twelve. All in favor, please say aye. All vote. RC twenty-four twelve is approved. Orders, member twenty-four oh four.
The only changes that have happened since second reading are the addition of language that was added by Councilman Baker and action of council to remove the residential accessory building separation standard in addition to the other requirements. So this is a quick background while we're doing what you see in Yellow Westman added to the request, and we continue to recommend approval.
Move for move, third reading. Second. Remove property second that we have third reading on orders, number twenty-four oh four. All in favor, please say aye. All vote. Orders, number twenty-four oh four, passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Orders twenty-four one zero zero eight, Ms. Bryant.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, south Carolina property consultations can approve the intersection, plainfall Street Road and Broad Street, Broad Street extension up in the Shaw Air Force Base. And when they do that, they're going to take a piece of property that belongs to the city and the county, and when they take that property, the city has to move its water line further onto the property. And because that property is owned by the city and the county, the city needs the county commission to move that water line, so they're asking for a twenty-foot easement, so they construct a new water line further onto the property and way of weather. Probably be condemned by S C P O two. Any questions? There's a property, and you see that the gentle line shows actually parcels owned by the city and the county, and the southern part, north is on the top, south is on the bottom, so the southern line there is going to move up about twenty feet. That's just what's going on.
Any questions, Ms. Bryant? Move to second reading. We have a public hearing on this as well. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this amendment, please proceed to the voting. Seeing none? Please, please. Second, right? Second, right. Remove property second that we have second reading on orders, number twenty-four one zero zero eight. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Orders twenty-four oh nine, first reading entitled only, Ms. Bryant. Mr. Chairman, ordinance twenty-four one zero zero nine is an artist to amend the sections of the code of ordinance to South County South Carolina applicable to meetings and rules and order of business. That's the title.
We did have a presentation in fiscal text. It's a document that is... It is being looked at, and we'll have additional meetings with it if it's entitled only. First question, council. Move to first reading, Mr. Chairman. Second, discussion. Can we have the document read so the public has the benefit of knowing what rules will be changed? Not today, the draft is available, if necessary, but this is just entitled only. We have not finished with the draft yet, Ms. Bryant. Mr. Chairman, point of entry. At our last meeting, we had a conversation about the parliamentarian that you met with, and I'm wondering if there was a written report from the parliamentarian? No, there was not. It was just a discussion. It's a written report. Can you tell me, Mr. Chairman, who paid the parliamentarian? We didn't pay her, so it was free. Yes, it was just a discussion. Can you also tell me why other council members were not allowed to participate in the discussion? We were just giving advice to bring something back to county council, which we did, Mr. Washington. I would have liked to participated in the meeting since I've been the one raising the points of order. It seems a little bit unfair that there was a meeting on parliamentary procedure, and the chairman came back to the body with their report to attempt to refute my point, which was clearly laid out in Robert's Rules of Order. It seems a little bit disingenuous to give a report without a written report, a verbal report, and then no transaction of the process. Do you agree with that, Mr. Chairman? No, I don't, Mr. Washington, because when several meetings ago, the South Carolina Association of Counties was passed out to all of the county council members, and it was asked of staff to come back with something that could be presented to council to discuss and tear apart, and that's what we did. You don't think it was important that other members participate? You are participating, and we brought the document back. We are not voting on it now. We will be discussing it. You will have every available time to do whatever you want to to tear that document apart as well. What I wanted to do, Mr. Chairman, is ask the parliamentarian questions, just like you did. Well, I'm sorry, that did not happen. I didn't think that there was a need. I did, as council asked, instruct your staff to bring back the document, which I did. Not only that, I think council should have participated in who the parliamentarian was going to be that gave us the advice. And I also did some research on the parliamentarian. She did work in Buford at two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, and there were several questions about some of her work. I know you guys don't like for me to read from the information that I have, but I do have an article that the Buford paper printed that talked about several issues and problems around her employment, which gives me a great deal of pause. Now, which is why I don't understand why you have brought it to this body and introduced it to us. There was no payment, there was no contract, there was no formal conversation, there's no written report, there's no recorded report. It's just you and her talking and coming back. The questions that you asked... She did not put this document together, Mr. Washington. Well, I'm not talking about that document, but my point is the questions that you asked her, I'll bet every dollar I have in my pocket that it would be different from the questions that you asked her. I don't understand why you... The document that we're discussing was put together by staff, Mr. Washington. I'm just suggesting that the meeting with the parliamentarian, I consider an invalid meeting because it was not a professional arrangement. There was no contract, there was no written report, there was no verbal report, there was no taped report, but you used it in council as evidence of a report to council from a parliamentarian in an attempt to refute the points that I raised in Robert's Rules of Order. I used Robert's Rules of Order to refute what you said, Mr. Washington, not what she said. You used her language, Mr. Chairman. I used the language from Robert's Rules of Order, which I'd like you to read to you. I read it to you as well. I read it to you as well, and you said you didn't understand what not well taken me. It's right here in Robert's Rules. But I also see in this ordinance, you describe county council as a deliberative assembly, and the last council meeting, you said we act as a board or commission, and you were incorrect. Well, I took the information straight from the South Carolina Association of Counties, or at least staff did. But last week, you said, and I think I remember council saying, that we operated like a small board or commission, and Robert's Rules of Order identifies legislative bodies differently, and you refuted me on that, Mr. Chairman. And that was... Legislative bodies of less than twelve are small bodies according to Robert's rule, Mr. Washington. Then why do they separate it out? I don't know why. You do know why, Mr. Chairman. It says small boards. The language that I use, except in committees and small boards, which we are considered to be a small body because we are less than twelve, the presiding officer does not enter into discussion on merits of the pending questions, except in small boards. That's what it says, Mr. Chairman. It said I just read it to you. But at any rate, let's move to the ordinance. I do have a couple of questions about the ordinance. Why didn't you raise your... Remember, we were talking about them in the meeting. Because... This is just the vote to move it on so we can have continuing discussion. I'm going to tell you why. Because the way I represent my folks, I do it with transparency, and what I say in the back, I want said in the front, and so I wanted the public to know exactly what we're talking about, because we're talking about transformational changes. We're talking about limiting the public in their comments. We're talking about limiting council members in their comments. Essentially, this document makes you and the county administrator a dictator. That's what this document does, and if that is the intent, we should share that with the public and tell them, we don't want to hear from you, we want you to let us do what we want to do, and we're not interested in hearing from other council members who are opposed to what's going on. And in this document, did you know, Mr. Chairman, that in this document, the document says if an individual speaks during a public comment and takes a position on an issue, and another person gets up to take a position on the issue, maybe the same issue but a different angle, that you have the authority to tell them that they can't make their comments, that the only thing they can say is I agree with the last person? That is a violation of the freedom of speech. Amendment one. That's what it said. That's exactly what it said. Well, then we can work on that. This is not the final document, Mr. Washington. You have every right to bring your personal opinion and your personal choice, and we can make those changes. Mr. Chairman, I'll work with you on the changes, but let me make something very clear. When I speak, I'm not speaking for myself. I'm speaking for my constituents. Yes, you made that question to the people. Yes, all of us on this. Well, I mean, but you made a comment, and I'm responding, and I'm not trying to go back and forth with you or be disrespectful, but the one thing that I will do, these folks put trust in me, and I'm going to make sure they maintain trust in me. And this document censors the public, it does not allow for the even flow of communication. I mean, why would you put in a document... I mean, why would you put in a document if one person speaks and another person wants to speak on the same subject? Because they're talking about the same thing, the chair has the authority to sit them down. Is that what we really, do we really want to sit someone off like that?
That's not what it says. I'm not gonna sit anybody down if they want to speak, Mr. Washington, but if we keep dragging on and on and on, and it's the same subject over and over again, and they agree with what's being said before, that's fine. I'm just, we're just trying to bring our meetings back to regular order. You have the same right as anybody in this body to discuss this document in the fiscal tax committee and suggest any changes that you wish. All we're trying to do is move this process forward.
Mr. Chairman, let me give you an example. Did you know, because I'm asking a question, because this is not debate, the first reading is title only, so I'm asking a question. So, my question starts with, did you know, right? That in this document, if there is an issue that is raised and the issue is disposed of, it cannot even be brought back to council for ninety days? Did you know that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
That is not appropriate. And let me give you an example of why that's not appropriate. When we talked about business licenses, no one was interested in addressing business licenses. But we kept talking about it, we kept talking about it, and finally, we had a resolution that everybody could live with. What this document does is limit the public, and it limits council members. This is not how we should be doing this.
Well, then let's change it, Mr. Washington. This is entitled only, we're not voting on this document now. We're voting to move the process forward. All you gotta do is talk to us, Mr. Washington. You would rather come out here, like you said, and discuss it out here. You didn't say a word back there, not one word.
No, sir. Okay, because I want my folks to have the benefit of hearing the dialogue, that is important, Mr. Chairman.
You can share that with them at any point, Mr. Washington, they wanna hear it here from us. That's why they're here, Mr. Chairman.
More than the title. But I'll come back on second reading, because I'm not trying to agitate you, Mr. Chairman, but just please, but just please know, I mean, you understand my position? I'm gonna represent my people, but I'll wait until second reading because I have a number of questions that we're gonna have to deal with.
Okay, exactly.
Mr. Chairman, before we move, I'd like to recognize, please, I listened to my colleague, Councilman Washington, and he asked some very valid questions. And I have some questions too, because I don't know what the heck is going on. Really, because in our last meeting, I asked you, do we operate under Robert Rules of Order? And you said yes. All of a sudden now, Robert Rules of Order is thrown out the window, and you're coming with this new ordinance on how to conduct meetings. Why was Robert Rules of Order thrown away?
Because Robert's Rules of Order is not well suited for small bodies such as this in spacing for the South Carolina Association of Counties. All we're trying to do is consolidate some of the things in Robert's Rules. It's not a finished document, people.
Okay, okay, so, the South Carolina Association of Counties put out public procedural proceedings. Why didn't we just adopt it? Instead of you going around adopting a part of, Charleston's a part of, of seven different organizations?
Because they said in this, you don't just adopt it ahead. It has to be specific to every county. That's why we look at others as well. Look, we're gonna discuss this, you didn't say a word back there, really?
Of course not, because I'm like my councilman, because I wanted the public to hear this because the last time I was here, the public heard that we was operating under Robert Rules of Order.
We still are, this is something to try to take this seven hundred and four-page document and reduce it into something that is concise and we can all live with. It's just entitled only, we moving the process forward.
Okay, let me, because you asked if people read this. And I read it. And I'm looking at this body right now, and all of the people in it. You have something in this document that said public comments will only last for thirty minutes. That means that if people wanna talk, and we have a three-minute limit, only ten of you can talk. After that, it's cut off. Now...
It's not cut off.
But you, it's in this thing here, I mean, I'm reading it right now. No...
It's a draft.
Look, no public participation will be allowed during regular scheduled meetings, except during public comments. The public comment period should be limited to thirty minutes. That's in this draft. Okay. Now, I had the pleasure, and my colleague sitting right next to me, a servant as chairman of the county council. And one of the things that I said, that we are servants of the people. We should listen to the people. And we should allow the people to come and share their feelings. But if we are gonna control them and say, you're gonna be cut off once we get to ten people, number eleven, I'm sorry, sit down, time is, we're gonna have to talk. Now, why would we do something like that? I mean, just, I mean, this stuff like that just irritates me in this thing. Why would we do something like that when we are sharing the people? I mean, I can't understand that.
Mr. Chairman, we can move on, but I just wanna leave you with one thought. There's a piece in this document that says if a council member has a question about operations in the county, that I must go to the county administrator first, and then if I'm not satisfied, come to you, and then you will appoint a committee? Mr. Chairman, I'm not gonna do that, these people didn't elect me to do that. If I have a question, if I have a question, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask it. You don't have to respond, county administrator doesn't have to respond. But if we pass this, we are slapping the people in the face, just know that. And there will be consequences for that, but we'll work on it next week, we can move on.
Well, when we say this, no participation, which means when you come in this... Shut up. You can't talk to anyone, you can't whisper to anyone, you can't do anything until a public comment. You can't even show no emotion, feelings, if somebody says something, you can't say. You can't do that, you're gonna be mummied. Sit here, stone-faced, and look. Now, Mr. Chairman, come on. What do you want? You wanna be a dictator?
I just wanna make...
No, you wanna be a dictator, you wanna be a dictator.
See, that's why I see...
And then, come on. Well, we're gonna discuss this later, but like I said, you know, come on, let's be real. That's right, you need it, because a people like me gonna stand up for the people. That's why I work for the people, they don't work for me.
Mr. Chairman, before we have our first question? Any further discussion here in honor of the bailiff? Having first reading, title only, please.
Hi. Uh, could be a roll call, Mr. Chairman, by voice, Mr. Washington? Nay. Uh, uh.
Hi.
Uh.
Uh.
Nay. Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, this is for the motion now. You said discussion, and you went too fast. I can't compete with them, they can talk so, so well. But I just wanted to let the public know that we, you know, I did have an opportunity to, I couldn't refuse it like I wanted to. And I welcome the time to be able to look at it and be able to address the concerns that are, that are in it, you know. I want to be able to do that. Because we do, you know, like I said, in the committee meeting, that we do have to have parliamentary procedures, you know, and I welcome that. And I hope that we will, you know, learn to agree to disagree, to conduct ourselves like lady and gentleman. And, you know, and whenever we can't come to an agreement, to be able to find a common ground. And so, I'm voting yes to give that opportunity for us to be able to tweak it, to look at everything if the Association of Counties so fit. And this is not the first, you know, all these years that I've been on here, this is not the first publication like that one, they've done it before. And, okay, so that's the third edition. And then we tried to utilize it, just looking at it. To me, it still looks like Robert Rules, and I can see where, you know, there are some concerns. But I, you know, welcome that opportunity to take it and do a comparative analysis and to find the common grounds. And so that's my reason for voting to continue with it.
The fiscal tax property committee, in me, all members were present. We had an executive session where we had economic development now, information only. No action was taken. We have a motion and a second coming out of the committee. We have received a letter from Representative David Weeks and the family of Bill Painty in order to move his statue from its location to the African-American cultural heritage monument park that is being developed on Manning Avenue. So we have a motion and a second, it's not gonna cost the county anything to move the monument in the discussion. You're not all in favor of the motion, they said I...
Mr. Chairman, could I use just a second and report to the council? Just to make, just to update the public, uh...
I'm sorry, Chairman's finished his first question.
I'm sorry.
Did you finish the first question?
I'm sorry.
No.
No, I haven't got that. I apologize.
We did also have a presentation from the county department on the fiscal tax report, and it was limited information only, no action was taken. That concludes my report.
Mr. Chairman, could I update, make an update to the public of what's going on with my committee's public works? And then...
Wait, that's the next item on the agenda?
Yeah.
Report from county council?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted the public to know, there's been a lot of talk about private roads, probably for the last month or so, it's kinda gotten quiet. We have sent a request to the attorney general to give us some type of guidance into what we can do with private roads, what we can't. We've gotten that request back, and now I think, I'm hoping that we can have some type of public works meeting. I know, I go back to Mr. Washington on his very first, when he first brought up private roads, he talked about some type of easement that we could use to put our equipment in these roads. And I'm talking about roads, not every private road, these are roads that are, it's an emergency, where you can't, if you have an issue with EMS, fire, either police, whatever, those are the roads we're talking about, where the county can, we're trying to figure out how, what to get in these roads and deal with that emergency situation. Mr. Washington, you know you're on that committee, and you'll be involved as much as I am with this. So, and I think the administrator may be, administrator's report, he may give us an update on what the attorney general's angle was.
Thank you. Anyone else? Month of reports, Mr. President?
Is that, can I say something about what you said?
I don't, I hope you'll be able to hear me with this, but I'd rather you not have that bad sound, so I turned everything off. So, council members, there's information in your packet that of a Walmart grand reopening, USC Sumter fire, and softball field grand opening, the planning commission, information is in the packet, and the building code, information is also in your packet. There is information concerning General Thomas Sumter, if you all would like to participate. I think you will be, I do be back in town then, August the third, if you all are interested in doing that. And please remember the South Carolina Association of Counties conference, we will have one council member graduating from Level Two Institute classes. And Emmanuel, United Methodist Church is having a golfing tournament, and they would like any council member that want to participate, to participate. That's it.
Mr. Wilson? Chair, council members, good evening again, just to follow up on Councilor's request. We did receive in the last week correspondence from the attorney general's office. As council knows, and some of the folks, members in the audience may know that we have had a number of correspondences with the attorney general's office, trying to figure out a way how the county can, at least based on legal opinion, provide services on a private road. So we've got the last correspondence back in the last week, we've had a chance to review it. We had a follow-up conversation with the staff person that provided that information. And I think we're getting to a point now that we have something to bring to council for discussion, to try to figure out a way to hopefully address the major concern of private roads, especially as it relates to emergency services. So, look forward to the opportunity to discuss this with council, just to kinda give you an idea of what it looks as though there would have to be some type of special tax district developed, and then some language related to easements that would allow us to then get in and provide a service on a private road. But again, still a lot more information, a lot more work to be done on it, but I think we're at a point now that we've got at least a path forward that we can work through and look forward to having that conversation with council at the August thirteenth meeting, is when we propose to have that.
Yeah, so we'll have a public works meeting?
That's all, actually.
Coming on to the public comment portion of our meeting goes. Mr. Chairman, before we go, we skipped over reports from county council members and others.
That's what I just did.
Yeah, well, okay, I thought you were just gonna, I would like to add something, please. Just this past Friday, one of the county's effective civil rights advocates in Sumter County, Mr. Carl Holmes, passed away. Mr. Carl Holmes done a lot, he was the former president of Sumter Brands, HDP for many years. But one of the things that he did, he started a program called the Unity Program. And this Unity Program brought together citizens, mainly black and white citizens, coming together to discuss race relation issues and how to improve race relation issues in our county. Carl Holmes was my friend, and he was a friend of many of you who go there. His film is gonna be this Friday, July twenty fifth.
His film is gonna be this Friday, July twentieth, and I just wanna say that this community lost a great citizen, and I lost a very good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Coming on to the public comment portion of our general citizens, deciding to speak during public comment, a limited to three minutes, comments to be made with the chairman, public comment. If you have any questions, they'll be answered after. Public comment portion is over. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Lorenzo Beckins. Just wanna share with you, oh, my first, apologize for picking out a turn.
That's all right.
I didn't realize that.
That's all right.
Way because at the first, when the first lady was up here, and she made her comments for the first ordinance here, one, two, and three, not one, two, and three, yeah, one, two, and three, that she paused then, to ask whether anybody was gonna speak, and I thought it was all right to speak at any time. I just wanna share with the committee and the councilmen about the road, just speaking about the road. May resident, obviously, before, we had a road, road so rough and rugged, and water just washed it out. My family created another road, and the last month or so, with all the rain that we have, now this one is being washed out. And I hope and trust that the committee can meet again with it soon, very soon, and share with us what they can do to help us with the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Chairman, that's Reverend Lorenzo Beckins. His church up there. Reverend.
Good evening, council, chairman. First, I am going to again ask a question with a point about the.
The remaining three's for the record.
My Washington, I'm sorry, I kinda said that. First question is, when I talked last about this, I was told that the, I guess it's the Public Works Committee or Ms. Hyatt had made a capital fund request for the Dozer a couple of years ago, but the quote that was presented, or the, you know, is not available or not part of the file, but I did find the amount that was requested in 2023 for a new Dozer, it was five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, eight hundred and eighty dollars. And it was made again in twenty, it was denied, obviously, it was made again in 2024, and the price at that time for a new Dozer, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The other question I have is, it was said that this is coming from the Solid Waste Fund, but there wasn't enough money in the Solid Waste Fund to make the purchase. According to the records I have in the Solid Waste Fund in 2023, or for full batch in 2022, because this is the 2023 fiscal year budget request, it was six million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. And in 2024, well, this is actually current, 2025, as of now, it says there is seven million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So I'm kinda curious again, why we purchased a used Dozer in 2017, which, here the term high mileage, in this case, high hours, for the same, almost the same, because we take away what you would have gotten for a piece of equipment that you traded in, the same price for a piece of used equipment, when we could have purchased a new one? I, I need, you know, I would like to understand that process, and I'm not getting anywhere. And I don't know if you're gonna appoint a special committee, because the administrator, I mean, he tells me that this is the only information there is. He doesn't have any specs, I follow this in the file. So maybe after the meeting, someone can direct where we go from here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Good afternoon, council members, Mr. Chair, I'm Dr. Alex Young of Aiden, Councilman Aiden's daughter. I just wanna make an observation for you guys and everybody. I've been coming to these meetings for, what, over twenty years, as long as you've been on? I saw my father as chair, Ms. McGany as chair, and things were always harmonious. Everybody got along. It was, I mean, meetings were actually fun. Dad and councilman, he was had a good relationship. I remember you, Councilman Eaton, left a nice voicemail for Dad, and everybody got along. And now it's just chaotic. And I really don't see the need to change rules, because the same rules were in place when my father was chair and when Ms. McGany was chair, and everything went along smoothly. With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, you know I like you, but all these people were here before you, and it just seems how this chaos started when you came along. Sorry.